At this time, I will call this meeting to order. Clerk of the Board, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bodak, Commissioner Baker? And now Commissioner Bodak.
Here.
Commissioner Dellisford?
Present.
Commissioner Granados?
Here.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Here.
Commissioner Mirabella?
Present.
Commissioner Williams?
Here.
Vice Chairwoman Leon?
Here.
And Chairwoman Palmieri-Mudad?
Here.
Let the record reflect, you have nine Commissioners present for this evening's regular meeting.
Thank you. Clerk of the Board, please lead us in the prayer and salute to the flag.
Humbly we ask God to give your blessing, love, and charity to give the entire family of nations true agreement with his will and to grant the light of his Spirit on all who work for justice and peace. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Clerk of the Board, please read the Statement of Compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act.
The Chair wishes to announce that pursuant to the requirements of New Jersey statutes annotated Title X, Chapter 4, Section 10 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting with the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Union has been given by mailing the annual meeting schedule for the year 2024 along with periodic changes necessitated by circumstance to the newspapers circulating within the County of Union who are designated to receive such notice, and by posting the annual meeting schedule for the year 2024 in the Administration Building, and further by filing the annual meeting schedule for the year 2024 with the Office of the County Clerk.
May I have a motion to approve the communications?
No move, Madam Chair.
Second.
A motion was made by Commissioner Mirabella and was seconded by Commissioner Kowalski. Clerk of the Board, can you please call the roll?
Commissioner Baker?
Aye.
Commissioner Bodak?
Aye.
Commissioner Dellisford?
Aye.
Commissioner Granados?
Abstained on April 24th, aye to April 10th.
Commissioner, this is for the communications.
Oh, sorry. Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Yes.
Commissioner Mirabella?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Vice Chairwoman Leon?
Abstained from April 10th, no, sorry.
These are the communications.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It was Elizabeth Warren.
And the phone call, okay, sorry.
I believe that was an aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Chairwoman Palmieri-Mudad?
Aye.
Let the record reflect, you have nine votes in the affirmative on all the communications.
Thank you.
May I have a motion to approve the April minutes?
No move, Madam Chair.
Second.
A motion was made by Commissioner Mirabella and was seconded by Commissioner Dellisford. Clerk of the Board, can you please call the roll?
Commissioner Baker?
Aye, with the exception of April 24th Agenda Setting Session and April 24th Regular Meeting.
Commissioner Bodak?
Aye.
Commissioner Dellisford?
Aye.
Commissioner Granados?
Try this again. Aye, April 10th abstained from April 24th Regular and Agenda Setting Meeting.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Yes.
Commissioner Mirabella?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Vice Chairwoman Leon?
Abstained from the April 10th Agenda Setting and Regular Meeting, aye to April 24th Meetings.
Thank you. And Chairwoman Palmieri-Mudad?
Aye to all.
Let the record reflect, you have eight votes in the affirmative with one abstention for the April 10th Minutes, and seven votes in the affirmative with two abstentions for the April 24th Minutes.
Thank you. The meeting is now open to the public for the purpose of commenting on resolutions being offered for adoption and/or on any governmental issue that a member of the public feels may be of concern. Kindly state your name and town of residence for the record, and if speaking on a resolution on the agenda, please note the resolution number to which you are referring and adhere to the five-minute time limit.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Commissioner Board and various Golden Nuggets. This is Bruce Patterson, Garwood, New Jersey. First, for the public comment, and this is regarding the Union County Manager Ed Oatman's Clark Reservoir Dream Amusement Park. Since it's located on the waters of the reservoir, I guess it would be more fitting to call it Oatman's Wet Dream Amusement Park. And by now, you've seen the concept, you know, which I hold up just for the public and such. For your understanding, we will do a comparison of Oatman's Wet Dream Amusement Park, which is 14 acres, to the existing county's Ponderosa Park, which size is nearly 50% larger, at 20 acres. Visualization and perception really counting comparing the Ponderosa Park to Oatman's Wet Dream Amusement Park. Sadly, we have found the Commissioners really do not have that conceptualization, being that they're only appointed by the county Democrat political boss, state senate president, scutari, as minions and puppets. But for the public, the larger Ponderosa Park, for comparison, contains two parking areas with 92 spots, one football field, one soccer field, one playground spray area, one picnic area, one comfort building, one walking loop with passive green areas. Note, this park, which was Dutch Savell's farm, was a great joint effort of design between the residents living next to it and the county. All appears to passively fit in nicely. The smaller open wet dream amusement park...
Mr. Patterson, I'm going to remind you about your decorum and your language. Please adhere to our code or you will be escorted out. Are you, do you understand?
Nope, nice try. Nearly 40% less at 14 acres, which was wildlife preserve and is now an amusement park, and is also crammed in between two residential areas. This contains five parking areas at 140 spots, two weather shelters, one small county administration building, a small motorized train system with half-mile a trackage, one departure depot, one bridge, two distant platforms, two Wetland Creek crossovers, one entrance building with comfort station and concession stand, one clock tower with perimeter sitting area, one carousel building with flower garden and sitting area, one large SWM Basin Lake, I have no idea what SWM, swim, who knows, one play area with converted ice rink and change house and fire pit, one boathouse, one floating boat dock, no mention of kayaks, by the way, one boat ramp, one fishing pier, one exercise area, one non-loop walking trail through passive green areas, one loop trail. This is 10 pounds in a five-pound bag, as they say, for sure. Don't get me wrong, a boat dock and ramp fishing pier along with walking trails, exercise area, and playground is a great passive use of the area, which abuts two separate residential areas on both sides and would be similar to Echo Lake Park. I suggest you dump this concept quickly, please. Thank you. To the Resos. Reso 410 is increasing USA Architects contract of $200,000 by $100,000 just for paper shuffling for a sprinkler project in Annex Building. This change order increases the contract by 47%, which exceeds the county bylaws threshold, which is 20%, and should go out to another bid since sprinkler paper shuffling services are nothing exotic. Reso 437 is increasing Kingston Coventry Legal Firm's $100,000 contract by 50% or $50,000 for general counsel services. The public would like to know specific reason for this exorbitant increase since we have our own general counsel services in-house. Reso 444 is congratulating Eagle Scout Honorees Boy Scout Troop 101. The Eagle Scout Award is indeed a great honor, but there really should be something now in writing that says if one goes on in later life with the power to perfect legalize corruption like state senate president scutari has done, then it should be rescinded. You can look at maybe Pete Rose, the baseball legend, you know, as a good example, so, thank you.
Can you hear me okay? My name's Diana Gonzalez, and I'm a resident of Clark, New Jersey. I'm here to talk about the reservoir project, or the proposed project. I think some of us had been hearing about this for a while, but just in recent days learned more about it, and I think a lot of people are still pretty confused, but started reacting and asked for some coordination. So I offered to create a group and start collecting some feedback. So I'm just going to go through kind of sequentially, you know, the comments that were shared with me, and then share some of my own thoughts. So these are, you know, individual comments, right? These are all standalone, is what I'm trying to say. Terrible, awfully crowded, would be nice if it was a more passive area with a more natural feel than an overabundance of activities. These plans are not set in stone, are the dredging, hopefully. This property should be left as open space, not deforested. The Clark Reservoir is a natural preserve, not a theme park. Keep it natural for future generations. 18 parking spaces in front of a quiet street for no reason. Three proposed boat ramps, including on Wendell, which is a quiet residential street. People move in and out, and magnificent mature trees are being taken down, more apartments, more commercialization, more development, and destruction of what made Clark special. That's in the context of a series of changes, right? Not just the reservoir. The reservoir, I think, is also, folks are reacting to it after a series of changes that have been happening to the town over the years. Why does every piece of land have to be developed? What about the impact on all the animals? What happened to everyone caring about climate change and the environment? This will destroy the serenity of our neighborhood. Community involvement is key to any successful discussion and a favorable outcome. The flower garden at Esposito Park is not even maintained, and they want to do this? Not so great when it's in your neighborhood. It's going to suck for houses around the reservoir. What's going to happen to my peace? The train is out of place. Where does the wildlife move to? This is not good and a magnet for what the town doesn't want. The reservoir should remain natural as a wildlife preserve. Where do the fox, deer, oh no, I'm sorry, why do we have fox, deer, bear walking around the streets because of continuous, quote, "progress"? We have to stop encroaching and building every inch of land. Another paved paradise. I worry about what's going, who's going to police the areas so close to people's homes. More dead wildlife in the streets. We are a suburb. We don't want to look like a city. Stop building. They are ruining the town. Horrible. Why do we have to develop every bit of open space? Cutting down trees and displacing wildlife disrupts the ecosystem. I've got one more page. Thank you for your patience. How do we keep people from walking through, littering, and possibly breaking into the homes on Janessie Drive? We have enough traffic and congestion as it is. Leave the open space open. What's pictured will be in the backyards of Leffert Lane and Wendell Place, a parking lot and a boat ramp. I just don't understand why we can't leave the woods and the river in its natural state. Doing this in people's backyards is so stupid. We have Oak Ridge Park and the skate park on Madison Hill. We don't need this. We were told a walking path and dredging would be done, not a carnival and a full park in our literal backyard. Add a Ferris wheel to this tacky project. Ouch. Janessie Drive is about to have a lot of neighbors. More parking for thieves robbing homes. This will negatively impact my quality of life. This is a proposed amusement park. So these are individuals' direct quotes, right? And this is just in the last, I would say, 36 hours. I work a full-time job, and I have kids, so I have stuff in my inbox that I've yet to process. I don't want to come here to be disrespectful. I want to come here to share the feedback from the community. Speaking for myself, I grew up in Union County most of my life in Linden, going to Elizabeth and Newark where my family was.
Excuse me, ma'am, it's time.
Yeah, thank you.
Your time's up. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that. Thank you.
Can I talk about anything, or just here, and then later on, talk about anything that's not on here?
You can talk about anything. We just need your name and town for the record.
Okay. Nancy Twoskus from Clark, New Jersey. And I'm not here to talk about the reservoir, although I am totally on board with every single comment that was made by Diana. But I'm here to talk about the Ashbrook Golf Course. I've been playing golf at Ashbrook for over 30 years. In the past three years, it has become a disaster. There are holes that have pits of dirt and marsh and overgrown shrubs that you can't really call a fairway. You lose your balls in the fairway because they go into these little ponds that must be so deep they just swallow up the balls. The little creek, the little pond that's over there is lime green. It's as green as that light that I'm looking at. I don't know what's going on with the Ashbrook conditions. I do observe that the creeks that are at Ashbrook don't move. They are totally stationary. I don't play in the rain. I'm retired. I don't have to play in the rain. I don't have to play on weekends. But I can only imagine what happens when it rains there, and maybe that's part of the reason why the course is a big mud hole. I'm not saying every hole is like that, maybe five, six, but enough to be annoying. I still play there. It doesn't stop me. But I'm hoping by coming here today and making you aware, if you're not a golfer at Ashbrook, that, I don't know what the problem is at that golf course, but there is a problem at that golf course in the past three years. Before that, it was fine. There may be one hole. That would be mushy, and we'd all complain, oh, it's mushy, the hole is mushy. But now, it's not mush. It's holes. It's the creeks that are there. All right, I'm not the greatest golfer, so a lot of my balls go in the creek. Well, you used to be able to find your ball when it went in the creek. Now, if it goes in the creek, there's stuff this high growing out of the creek, all of the creeks. So I'm here to ask that the county go over there, take a look. I know that it's outsourced to Kemper. I'm not complaining about Kemper's company. The people that work for them are great employees. But I'm asking you to go and take a look at the conditions of that golf course because it is not good. And it's a shame that it's being neglected. To me, it's being neglected because it hasn't gotten any better in three years. And it was good for over 27 years. I was playing a little bit more than 30. So, thank you, and hopefully, maybe this time next year, when I go to play golf, I'll be feeling like my coming here and addressing the Commissioners made a difference. And if it looks the same, or God forbid it looks worse, then I'll know that it was just a total waste of my time. And I'm hoping it's not going to be a total waste of my time, because I don't have to be here tonight talking about the golf course. It shouldn't look like it does. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Delia Collins, 72 Georgia Street, Clark. This area where the proposed Disneyland Clark is going to be is horrendous. I'm going to read something from the Open Space Recreation Historic Preservation Trust Fund, and let you know, you know what you're planning to do, and what does this, all this carousels, ice rink, train, swimming basin, a bridge one side to the other side, and concession stands have to do with open space. This area is Zone O in Clark as a conference, I'm sorry, Conservation District. That means, to me, open land. The mission of the Open Space Trust Fund is to assist the execution policies made by the Union County Board of Commissioners to conserve open space, provide recreational opportunities, and preserve historic sites. When the trust fund was created by referendum in November of 2000, the voters of Union County indicated their strong commitment to all three aspects of the initiative acquisition of open space. Expansion of recreational opportunities and preservation of historic properties in Union County. This office works diligently to assist the Commissioner Board in providing direction in each area. As a result, the residents of this county continue to see ever-expanding benefits in all areas. What does a carousel, and a concession stands, and a bridge from one side of the reservoir to the other, close to the parkway, the swim basin, a train in people's backyard, an ice rink, have to do with open space? I can see your point in dredging the area over by Featherbit Lane. You could probably walk across it. That's how thick it is with undergrowth. And also, this area was used in the 2023-2024 bow hunt, so I'm sure your recreation department, deer management, will have something to say about losing that area for a deer hunt. Once you get rid of all the foliage, trees, it's going to create a horrible look to the area.
Seeing no one else, I will formally close this portion of the meeting. I'm going to ask County Council Bruce Bergen to comment on Resolution 437.
Thank you, Chair. The work being done by Kingston Coventry for the county is actually, at the time they were first appointed, we had not yet filed a lawsuit and were hoping to avoid it, and that's why it was indicated as general counsel services. But at this time, it's actually litigation. We are suing the original contractors and other people who worked on the Ashbrook Clubhouse to recover funds for their improper work on the building. So it is an ongoing litigation, although the caption in the original resolution said general counsel services. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. And I'll ask Director Vicki Durbin-Dreak to comment on the Ashbrook Golf Course, if possible.
Thank you, Chair. I'm delighted to be able to be able to address the concern. I'd like to just state that this board is well aware of the conditions at the golf course, and that they are putting their resources and their time into coming up with a solution. It's really two-pronged. We have, you have hired an engineering consulting firm to come up with an overall plan to address the golf course drainage issues. That is presently a project that the DEP has to approve, and we are in that stage right now. We hope to have some response by fall, and that will allow us to move forward. We also are right now getting ready to award a contract that will deal with another portion that we believe is causing serious concern, and we're out to bid. It's a restoration bid, and it should be awarded next month. It's going to clear an additional 500 feet downstream of the area underneath the power lines, and, you know, we expect that to have an impact as well.
Thank you. Okay. At this time, I would like to ask for a motion to adopt Resolutions 2024-407 through 2024-452.
No move, Madam Chair.
Second.
A motion was made by Commissioner Mirabella, was seconded by Commissioner Bodak. Clerk of the Board, please call the roll.
Commissioner Baker?
Aye.
Commissioner Bodak?
Aye.
Commissioner Dellisford?
Aye.
Commissioner Granados?
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Yes.
Commissioner Mirabella?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Vice Chairwoman Leon?
Aye.
And Chairwoman Palmieri-Mudad?
Aye.
Chair, let the record reflect, there are nine votes in the affirmative on all resolutions.
Thank you. At this time, we will offer our Commissioner Reports and Comments. I will start with Commissioner Bodak.
We are happy to announce this year's Plant Swap and Shop Event on June 6th from 5:30 PM to 8:00 PM in the Scout Camping Area of the Wachong Reservation. Residents are invited to bring up to three distinct invasive plants and exchange them for up to three native plants, all at no cost. This initiative aims to promote the removal of invasive species from the local ecosystem while encouraging the planting of native species which are vital for supporting biodiversity and enhancing natural landscape. For examples of invasive plants, and for a list of plants offered in the swap, please visit our website. In addition to the plant swap, participants will have the opportunity to shop for native plants at the event courtesy of Toad Shade Native Plant Nursery. Toad Shade is a plant nursery in Frenchtown that specializes in native perennial propagated wildflower plants. Pre-orders through Toad's website at http/wwtodeshade.com are recommended for convenient pickup at the event. To ensure a smooth and enjoyable experience for all attendees, pre-registration for the event is required, with a maximum of 100 registrants accepted. For more information or to register, residents can register by visiting www ucnj.org/plant-swap. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Dellisford?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Union County Board of County Commissioners and the Department of Parks and Recreation invites all middle and high schools to participate in the 2024 Fairy House Art Contest. This contest is part of Chairwoman Kimberly Palmieri-Mudad's 2024 Growing Together in Union County Initiatives. This unique contest invites students from Grade 6 to 12 throughout Union County to design and create magical fairy houses, with a special prize awarded to the winning entry. Participating schools are asked to submit one fairy house, which will be evaluated by a panel of professional judges and displayed in one of the Union County's parks. For a list of acceptable materials for design, please visit our website. The progression of the project must be submitted through the following link provided in the application, which is ucnj.org/fairy-house-updates. Participating students must also fill out and sign a media release. Most importantly, students are asked to use their imagination. Schools must submit their registration by Friday, May 31st, no later than 5:00 PM. The project must be completed by Tuesday, October 15th. The details on how the project will be picked up will be announced closer to the project deadline. For more information on how to register and participate, please visit ucnj.org/fairy-trail-application. I'd also like to highlight an upcoming event on June 11th, which is our Union County Women's Means Business Summit at the Galloping Hill Golf Course in Kennelworth. This event brings together women, entrepreneurs, professionals, and leaders for networking, workshops, and discussions on leadership, career development, and more. This year's keynote speaker is Adina Bayou, founder at Adina Bayou and Companies. For more information, visit ucnj.org/ucwmb. Also, I attended several Haitian flag raisings this week, and I just want to send out kudos to all the municipalities who really took the initiative to highlight diversity in their respective towns and throughout Union County. And Memorial Day is upon us, so I would just like to wish our veterans all the best and let them know that we thank them for their sacrifice, for their service, and we appreciate them. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Mirabella?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Vote-by-mail ballots are available at the Union County Clerk's offices in Elizabeth and Westfield for anyone seeking to obtain a vote-by-mail ballot for the 2024 Presidential Primary Election. Voters can use the County Clerk's one-stop service. They can come and fill out in Westfield or Elizabeth, apply for their ballot, receive it, fill it out, and deposit it in a secure drop box on-site. All the same visit. Privacy booths are located in the office, in those offices, for people who wish to fill out their ballot that way. The office locations and hours are in the Union County Courthouse, located to Broad Street, Room 113 in Elizabeth. The regular hours, Monday through Friday, are 8:30 to 4:30, open on Saturday, June 3rd, from 9:00 to 1:00 for a vote by mail. And the Colleen Fra, I think it's June 1st, though. I don't think it's June 3rd. Anyway, if that's a Saturday. And the Colleen Fraser Building, located at 300 North Avenue East, the Union County Services Complex in Westfield. Regular hours are Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, 8 to 4; Tuesday and Thursday, 8:00 AM to 7:30 PM, and on Saturday from 9 to 1. For more information, the County Clerk's services, please visit unioncountenvotes.com or contact the Division of Elections at 908-527-4996, or ucvote@ucnj.org. Couple other quick things, Madam Chair. Just this early, this... Just this early afternoon, I was able to attend a school in Winfield with some second graders, and they are recycling champions. And we have a program in the county where our recycling experts are visiting schools, talking to young children about what it means to recycle. And I was very impressed with this group of students and how bright they were and how much they did actually know about recycling. So that was great, and I was happy to be a part of that in Winfield. Just earlier this week, I attended a Union County Means Business Event, similar to Commissioner Dellisford. This one was actually directed to artificial intelligence, and I appreciated the vice-chairperson's comments. I know many of us were there, I think Commissioner Kowalski, Commissioner Williams, and myself, Commissioner Dellisford as well. And it was a really interesting conversation. I want to thank Kane University for always being good partners and making that space available to us. And I want to thank our staff, Dina Messeros and Jeff Brooks, who really did a nice job pulling that event together. As far as the Clark Reservoir is concerned, I know we're gathering feedback on that amongst tonight, being part of that. And I do know unless somebody else is going to speak to this, there's going to be a forum in Clark in June that I guess more specifics will come out and have an opportunity to have kind of a public meeting on that. Is that right, County Manager? I don't know that we've set it up, but we're talking about it with the Mayor's Office? Okay. So there'll be more information to follow. We hope to come out there and have some conversations directly with people in the area. And I want to join my colleagues to also thank our veterans and honor those who made the ultimate sacrifice on this coming Memorial Day. With that, Madam Chair, I conclude my comments.
Thank you. Commissioner Kowalski?
Thank you, Chair. Union County Clerk Joanne Rajapi has announced that the ballot drawing for the special primary election in the 10th Congressional District will take place on Monday, May 20th, at 3:00 PM in the Union County Courthouse. This special election is being held to fill the vacancy left by the late Congressman Donald Payne, who represented the towns of Cranford, Garwood, Hillside, Kennelworth, Roselle, Roselle Park, Union Township, and parts of Linden, as well as parts of other counties. The special primary election will be held on Tuesday, July 16th, and then two months later, there will be a special general election, and that will be on Wednesday, September 18th. So for more information on voting in our Union County elections, you can go to unioncountyvotes.com or call 908-527-4996. And for more information about all county clerk programs and services, you can go to ucnj.org/countyclerk or call 908-527-4787. And I'd like to add that, of course, this time of year is a happy time as far as students and many other people. There's graduation ceremonies, very impressive graduation ceremonies held over at Union College of Union County, New Jersey. In the last week, I was privileged to attend that, and I know many of my colleagues have attended the graduations over the years. Also commend the Prosecutor's Office and the Human Relations Commission on their awards, which were held last week. The Teen Arts Festival happened up in the Wachong Reservation, as well as the Master Gardeners Spring Garden Event in the demonstration gardens in the reservation. Many things going on, so I encourage everybody to check our website and Facebook and visit our parks and our county facilities through the rest of the spring and the summer. And my thanks also to our veterans and wish everyone a happy Memorial Day weekend. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Baker?
Thank you. On behalf of the Union County Board of Commissioners and the County of Union, we would like to announce two events that are happening in conjunction with one another. We would like for the county residents to join our Recycling Bureau on Sunday, June 2nd, from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM at Union College of Union County, New Jersey, 1033 Springfield Avenue in Cranford. Now, there's one event is going to be held for the disposal of household hazardous waste, which is created as a collection site. This event is a collection site for the safe disposal of items like chemicals, oil-based paints, batteries, and more. The next event is the Beyond the Ben Recycling Event, which will take a collection of electronics, clean plastic bags, textiles, reusable bags, food wastes, and specific forms of styrofoam. These events provide comprehensive solutions for hazardous waste disposal and recycling, benefiting the environment and community. For detailed lists of acceptable items and additional event specifics, visit our website at www ucnj.org/recycling or call the recycling hotline at 908-654-9889. And I would just like to add that I hope that the residents do take advantage of these upcoming events, recycling and the disposal of hazardous waste materials and other things like textiles and reusable bags, especially styrofoam is taking, styrofoam is taking on a different kind or new kind of issue and concern in terms of its environmental impact. So I hope that our residents continue and wisely comply with the recycling program and come out and participate in these two events and minimize the impact that these articles or items have on our environment, okay? Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Williams?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The County Board, as well as the Department of Parks and Recreation, would like to invite all residents to kick off the summer season with Rhythm and Blues by the Brook, an afternoon full of musical performances and activities at Cedar Brook Park in Plainfield on Saturday, June 1st, from 12 noon to 6:00 PM. Rhythm and Blues by the Brook 2024 will be headlined by the still musical sensation, The Fifth Dimension, a Grammy-winning five-part vocal R&B group, which has withstood the test of time, racking up 22 Top 40 hits, including Up, Up &amp; Away, Aquarius, and my personal favorite, Stone Soul Picnic. Five number-one songs and over $25 million in sales and almost 60 years in the music industry. Also appearing will be vocalist The Company Men, delivering a sound that combines artists from Sam Cooke, another favorite, to The Weeknd, into a soulful blend. R&B groups True Soul and Frequenti will also stay at the stage, and DJ Bukim will once again serve as master of ceremonies. During the event, guests can visit the food and vendor marketplace and enjoy their favorite summer treats and refreshments. Additionally, the Car and Motorcycle Spectacular, presented by Gee Whiz Auto Entertainment, will also be returning this year. Children especially can look forward to an exciting afternoon packed with activities from 1:30 to 4:30 PM. They can tackle our challenge course and bounce around in inflatable attractions in our kids' zone. Additionally, sponsored by Zeta Phi Beta Sorority, Inc., ETA Omicron Zeta Chapter of Plainfield, the Health and Wellness Fair will also make a comeback. And for schedule details and updates on this event, please visit ucnj.org/randb. That's ucnj.org/randb. That concludes my comments. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Granados?
Thank you very much, Chair. We would like to invite our residents to our annual Union County Portuguese Flag Raising Ceremony in commemoration of the Day of Portugal. This re-event will take place on Thursday, May 30th, at 5:30 in front of the Union County Courthouse, located at 2 Broad Street in Elizabeth. This is co-sponsored by the Portuguese American Leadership Council of the United States, which is a national nonprofit based in Washington, DC area. The flag raising will include a short invocation, a speaking program, as well as the syncing of both national anthems. The national anthem of Portugal, sung by soloist Eliana Borogero of the Academy for Performing Arts in Scotch Plains. For more information about Portugal Day festivities around Union County, please visit our website on social media pages at ucnj.org. And for more information referenced this event, please contact Judith Guest, Community Engagement and Diversity Coordinator, at 908-527-4388, or via email at judith.guest@ucnj.org. And during Memorial Day weekend, let us honor, mourn, and reflect upon the US military personnel who died while serving in our armed forces. That is it. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. County Council Bergen?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you. County Manager Ed Oatman?
Thank you, Chair. Just a couple comments. I am aware of the comments on the Clark Neighbors Forum. I just wanted to also say there's plenty of positive comments on there who support the project. I don't want those comments to be overlooked. And there's also talk about swimming there. There is no swimming. That abbreviation is for stormwater management. It's a flood prevention tool. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chairwoman Leon?
Thank you, Chairwoman. Yesterday, I had the pleasure of attending and speaking at the Union County Means Business AI Unleashed Panel at Kane University with my colleagues, Commissioners Dellisford, Mirabella, and Kowalski, as well as our county surrogate, Christopher Hurdak. It was great to see so many local business leaders learning about leveraging artificial intelligence and making ethical considerations regarding AI in their daily lives. In this ever-changing tech world, it is particularly exciting to learn about the latest advancements and how we can integrate these innovative technologies in our community and businesses. Special thanks to our host Drew Thompson and our panelists, Hans Floriball of Google, Latisha Gather of Abundance IQ, and Dr. David Joyner of Kane University. I also want to send a big shout-out to Jeff Brooks and Dina Messeros for their phenomenal job that they did, and all the county staff. I'm looking forward to the next event and the opportunity to continue exploring new and exciting developments. Also, I want to wish a happy Memorial Day to all those veterans that sacrificed their lives for our liberty and well-being. And lastly, I want to congratulate our county manager on receiving his master's degree from Rutgers. Go, Ed!
Thank you.
Thank you. Congrats, Ed. On Monday, I attended the successful banding of four male falcon chicks at the Union County Courthouse. We had two years in a row with four females, so this is the first time in a while we've had any male chicks. So that was very exciting. These ID bands, along with the rooftop webcams, help the county and its wildlife partners track the falcon's behaviors and habits for better preservation of the species. The baby falcons received a medical health checkup and were returned to their nests with their parents, Mango and Frida. And if you were in the area, you saw they were just screaming until the babies came back. So it was just a really very cool experience. The falcon population in the US was severely reduced in the 20th century due to pollutants like DDT, leading to their addition to the federal endangered species list in 1973. Improvements have allowed their removal from the federal list in 1999, but they still remain an endangered animal in New Jersey. Union County joined the restoration efforts in 2006, installing a nesting box on the courthouse tower roof under the state wildlife experts' guidance, and the falcons have laid eggs there annually since 2016. And we have cameras there that provide 24/7 falcon cam livestream of the nests. And I know that a lot of our residents, as well as our schools and classes, follow it on a daily basis to keep tabs on it. And it was a really exciting thing. A few of us, Lourdes and I, were able to hold, each hold a baby falcon, and it was just a very cool experience to have. And we are so grateful for our wildlife partners, as well as our team over at Trailside and Robert Tarkowski, who bravely went up there and helped grab those babies. It was really a very cool experience and something really fun to be a part of, so I'm so grateful for all of that. We've had some really great events recently. Our Teen Arts Festival up at Trailside was really fantastic last week. We have some of the most talented students in the country, probably in the world, living right here in Union County. And it was just a day full of dancing and singing and performances and artwork and glassblowing. I mean, the list goes on and on, and it was really a fun day to see so many students. And I was actually speaking to one of our county police officers who were there, who I know from a long time ago high school. And we talked about how these things are so important now to have other outlets for students that may have to find their place somewhere else. And through things like teen arts, they've found a place to be able to shine and highlight what they do. So it was really a wonderful day. We also had Touch a Truck last weekend at Oak Ridge Park, which was a really great partnership. We had our Clark Fire Department there. We had our county emergency vehicles there. We had our disc golf group there, and my kids, I will tell you now, want to play disc golf. They want me to get a set for the backyard because they had so much fun doing that. And just again, another great day for Union County. And then if I could just briefly touch upon the reservoir, I know that Commissioner Mirabella said that we are planning to head into Clark in the upcoming weeks to speak to any residents that may want to talk about things that they like or dislike about the plants. And I know that our residents here today were just relaying some of the comments that other people have made. But something along the lines that stuck with me was a magnet for what the town doesn't want is really, I think, the polar opposite of what the plan is. As a mom, as everyone knows, a mom of young children, there's so many things that are limited to people because of cost and abilities to be able to get to things, or the amount of children you have and not being able to do it. So outdoor recreation spaces like this are just really what make our county so amazing. And I know that I spoke to a friend of mine who lives in Clark with young children. Her daughter actually came here a couple of years ago, if you remember, because she had said, "Can we do something at the Clark Reservation to make it, you know, something for the kids in town?" And I think it's a great opportunity to have something special right here in Union County that residents can take advantage of and without having to drive far away, without having to pay a lot of money with all the overdevelopment of housing and apartments. And this is really something that's going to highlight and accentuate some of our open space, and I'm really looking forward to it. So I know that we'll have that forum coming up, and I do agree with our county manager that there were plenty of people on that site that we didn't highlight tonight that had some really positive things. So thank you for coming to the meeting tonight. And with that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Oh, and I also want to just recognize Memorial Day weekend this weekend and thank our servicemen and women who sacrificed their life for our freedom. Thank you.
Chair, may I just, as for the motion to adjourn? There was a...
I'm sorry. Motion was made by Commissioner Baker, seconded by Commissioner Williams.
Okay. Well, I need an all in favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.[1785.42]